We're super excited about serving this community. My wife happens to be the president of the Astero Chamber, so I'm very familiar with the mayor and the mayor is there and enjoyed serving them, so thank you for allowing me to be here this evening. So for our prayer this evening, I'd like to read first from Psalm chapter 33. God's word says this, verse 11, "The counsel of the Lord stands forever, the plans of his heart to all generations. Blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord." Let's pray. Father, I just thank you so much for the opportunity to publicly speak about you, to praise your name in front of people and your people. Father, we thank you so much for allowing us to be and to serve you each and every day for giving us breath and life to live. Lord, I pray for these proceedings this evening, and certainly a full house, and I'm sure there's important stuff to be discussed, so I pray for the success of everyone here, and I pray that it will glorify you, and we ask this in the name of Jesus. Amen. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to pledge allegiance in unison on three. One, two. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Caramba?
Present.
Councilmember Purdon?
Here.
Councilmember Carr?
Here.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Here.
Councilmember Corey?
Here.
Councilmember Gibson?
Here.
Councilmember Forbes?
Here.
Everybody's here tonight. The mayor's welcome. You're all welcome. I'm so glad to see you. Looks like somebody woke up Benita this summer. I'm glad you're here. We're going to have public comments on everything except AA, which is a zoning case. So if you want to keep, come up to the microphone and I'll give your public comment at this time.
Just to clarify, so there are, if you are here to speak on any item that's on the agenda, now is the time to speak with the exception of the zoning item, which is the next item to be considered, which is a separate public hearing.
Yes, please identify yourself.
Ron George, Little Hickory Island area. I have two quick things I wanted to mention today. One was on Agenda Item 14C, the adoption of the proposed millage rate. You know, I know the taxable value went up 15% in Benita Springs. I know that, you know, our taxes only are about 6% of, you know, the Benita Springs portion, only about 6% of the total tax on properties. That all said, the proposed rate of .8173, I would like to suggest that you consider a rate of like .8, a flat rate, and the reason for this is I think it would send a good message to the city that we're trying to keep things down, our taxes down, et cetera, even though it is a very minor amount. And so I think that would only be a decrease of about 2% to the ad valorem revenue for the city, so I think that would be reasonable, and it still would have a 13%, I believe, increase. So that's .1. Second item I wanted to talk very quickly on was 12A, and that's the lease of the Imperial Crossing. And I just don't think there's enough information out there yet to the public to continue to move this forward, and if you, if the council chooses to move it forward, I think you ought to ensure to the public that there's plenty of time between the first and the second reading to get all the information out there and let everybody digest it well, so we have a good consensus on which way to move on that item. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm going to kind of take off on where Ron. My name is Dwight Usman. For the record, I live in the Paradise Road area, and I'm going to speak on three agenda items. Number one, I am not opposed to or in favor of the Barron Collier project that they've now designed for the BVP, but I'm going to ask you to postpone a vote. Many full-time voters are out of town now, seasonal residents who are, who own property are out of town. People are think, will think you're trying to do this while they're gone. You really don't know what the voters want on their property. There needs to be a survey of everybody that's on our email list, and then at least you will be able to answer the people who say, "You don't know what the public wants." You will know. There will be two or three new council people as of November. This, this should be a campaign issue. I don't think any of you were elected based upon what you wanted to do with the BVP. Barron Collier took a year to review this. It's been 20 years since we bought the property. A decision that will change downtown forever can wait until after the election. There is no lease yet for you to review, so what's the point of putting to a second reading? And even more importantly, there is no appraisal of the property so that you could evaluate a lease if you even had one to look at. Number two, stormwater utility fee needs to remain the same. We have huge problems with stormwater and polluted water, and we need that mechanism that will allow us to borrow money. And the millage rate needs to remain the same, although I think Bron's idea of a slight rollback would, has some merit. Inflation has already increased our cost, and a recession that reduces tax revenue is possible. The last time we reduced or raised the millage rate was in the last recession, and you don't want to have to do that if we have another one. A rollback rate will save 80% of the homeowners less than $30 a year, but cost the city a million dollars. No one with a lease will save any money, but the person with a $5 million home will save $462. So the rollback rate is a tax cut for the rich, and what are you going to cut from the budget if you cut the revenue? We have huge expenses coming up, including the golf course purchase, many other stormwater and traffic issues that need to be funded. Please think about what I've said before you vote. Thank you.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Barbara Ogle, and I am here to say that I think the stormwater assessment fee should stay. I also think the millage rate should stay, although home prices have increased, we have more homes, we have more services, we have more requirements. As far as the Imperial Crossings property, for me, it's, you don't have a lease, you don't know what the lease is going to be. Barron Collier is here tonight, but they did not provide a lease to anyone, so for me, it's kind of like buying a pig in a poke. So you're going to get a sack, it might have a pig in it, it might have a raccoon in it, it might have a badger in it, but you don't know what's going to be in it. So I can't see why you would want to push this to a second reading before you get a chance to look at a lease, to look at what they are proposing, and for what the benefit would be for the city. So I ask that you please consider not moving this forward until you have more information from Barron Collier Companies. Thank you.
Alex Grant, former city councilman, and I'd like to speak on 12A just now. I'd like to remind everybody that we have had four major hurricanes in the last hundred years that flooded the former Bamboo Village property to a considerable extent, and you could see what the Kentucky flooding has done in the last week. And I think that is very important, especially when we know we have a major climate problem of increased rainwater, hurricanes, tornadoes, et cetera, et cetera, fires, whatever you want in this country, well, probably worldwide. But another thing is, I had given the city council a year ago to each of you this Natural Resources Conservation Service report by both the federal government and the Florida State Soil Scientists Office in Gainesville, Florida. And I also gave you a information from a letter that I dated July 17, 2021. By the way, that was also shared with Barron Collier Corporation. Basically, what it has dealt with is with the flooding issue on that property. Now, if they are proposing a lot of residential area on that, then there is a legal exposure to all of us taxpayers, certainly when damage will occur to the residential units on that property. And you guys may not be here, but we will, and who's going to get, who has the deep pockets? It's the residents, the taxpayers of Benita Springs, and we will be left holding the bag in case somebody gets seriously injured, or drowns, or the building collapses, or whatever. And that is a very great possibility. It's happened before in the state of Florida, and we are not immune to that. The soils, there are a number of hydric soils on the property, but I have that information in, in here, in books, et cetera, in case anybody wants to deny that. Thank you.
I'm Gary Price, and I'm here to talk about a different item. I'd like to talk about consent agenda item 10F. I hate to be up here because I do, really do love small business. My wife runs a small business, and I know how difficult it is, and they are the lifeblood of this community. Churches are also important. They're very special, they're permitted in almost all zones, I believe, if not all zones, and they are also the lifeblood of the community. Approving this request is setting a dangerous precedent. You've got at least 15 sites throughout the city where they could have one and potentially two food trucks. Five of them, five additional sites are on East Terry. If you look at the application that was submitted, and I can only look at it, what was given to me, submittal requirements require a proof of insurance. The city is supposed to be additional insured. It's not on there. In fact, the food truck is not on there, it's just the church. The policy is written by an organization that looks like it's created for churches, and I don't even know whether they could be able to, or would want to fund insurance for a food truck. If you look at the general standards, section 4-2156 of the Land Development Code, number four, must be located on property or within a development with completed infrastructure improvements. This facility only has partial improvements, phase 1A and 1B. Number seven, no more than two mobile home, mobile food vendors can be permitted on a single site, and they have to be 250 single site, and they have to be 250 feet apart. I guarantee you that if you have adjacent facilities, they're going to be coming to you and asking you to weigh that 250-foot requirement. Number nine, permitted sites will have the mobile food vendor removed at the end of permitted operating hours. So he's going to pull that out every day. Yet he has to have sanitary facilities according to number 15. Now, is that going to be a port-alet that's going to be out there all the time constantly? Or is they're going to use the church facilities, which is about 150 feet away? Also, I have a rhetorical question. Does the commercial use of this property endanger the church's not-for-profit status and tax exemptions on that property? I urge you to deny this request because it will set a serious precedent throughout the community. And again, I love small businesses, I like food trucks, but this is just not the way to go. Thank you very much.
Does anybody else have a comment? That's Kyle.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Kyle Moran. I first moved to Benita Springs 30 years ago, and I spend almost every day in the downtown. And at this meeting and some others, I've heard some comments that really bring back some bad feelings of deja vu. One thing that comes to mind that's really unfortunate, happened to our city, it was finally concluded a year ago. It was this seven-year effort by a lot of the similar-thinking folks to create a historical village concept at the Bamboo Village. The idea was we'd take some 50- or 75-year-old buildings from around the city, we would transport them like we did Good Bread, you know, restaurant, we would park them at Bamboo Village, and that somehow that would spur some type of, you know, economic vibrancy and lead to a revitalization of that downtown, and be a worthwhile return on investment for the better part of $60 or $70 million that has been spent by the taxpayers in that area. For those that were aware of the downtown, we needed only to look at the artist cottages to realize what are really beautiful spots, really never get any visitors, and really have not worked on economic basis. And so after seven years, and this group had a city liaison, really good member of community development assigned to them, they ultimately, not being able to prove that this would work, were given money by this council to hire a couple consultants. They hired an architecture firm that specialized in this type of thing, and a financial, economic feasibility group with CPAs and things. And after their study was concluded, they figured out it would create no economic return, zero ROI. In fact, a negative ROI, even if you attributed the property at zero cost, which is fantasy land. And it would only have cost the taxpayer more money. And today, we're, we find ourselves at a similar crossroads with, with this project at Bamboo Village. And unfortunately, we're being confronted with a tremendous amount of misinformation. It's been shown that that project won't increase density or decrease density, that that project will have a minor impact on, on traffic. In fact, by not spreading out into suburban development and concentrating urban development, we actually decreased traffic around our city, which is great. We put people on bikes, and we put people on foot, which is really important. It's also been shown that this city has invested massively in public parking, 600 public parking spots in that downtown. They're very, they're rarely ever, even close to full, even on art fair days. And there have been falsehoods about the environment. When you really look at, this is a very balanced project. Yes, we have 120 apartments, but those are far less than the 135 trailer homes that were there. We have public park for the first time ever on that site, and public river access for the first time ever on that site, and retail, and restaurants. It's exceptionally balanced. And the best part of that, in fact, more historic arguably than most things that we're trying to save in this city, is a 100-year-old firm named Baron Collier that resides just down the street from us. They have a great history in building all of southwest Florida, and they remain a family business, and reputation is very important to them. And so what's great about partnering with strong partners is hopefully we can count on them. I don't expect that you reach out to all 65,000 Benetians and ask some questions about how to negotiate leases. That's your job as elected officials with, with appointed staff. So please do your best at the lease, but please represent us. And you know, let's get real for a second about that downtown, because I'm down there every day. And there are derelict trailers, and there are pawn shops, and there are check cashing spots. It's not the fantasy land that sometimes we're being sold, sold about this, you know, beautiful, historic, pristine land. That project is important to activating our downtown. It's a huge opportunity. Please go forward with it. Without it, we don't know what our destiny is, but it's not going to be great. Thank you very much.
Okay. I guess we go with Derek?
Next item.
8A.
Is a second reading.
Zoning.
Public hearing on the zoning ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, considering a request to rezone 20.99 plus or minus acres from commercial plan development, CPD, to commercial plan development slash residential plan development, CPD/RPD, to allow for a maximum of 252 multifamily dwelling units, including bonus density units, and up to 10,000 square feet of commercial use at northeast intersection of Benita Beach Road and I-75 Benita Springs, Florida, 34135, providing for an effective date and consideration of bonus density agreement for the proposed project.
Good evening, Council. Mary is as out for the record.
Before you get started, because this is a, this is a quasi-additional hearing, anyone who's here, whether the applicant staff, or any members of the public who may just feel the, the urge to get up and speak in the moment, I'd ask that we swear you in right now. Please raise your hand, right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
This is a request to rezone from a current commercial plan development to a residential plan development with 252 multifamily units, as well as a commercial component, a 1.4-acre parcel. The applicant is here to make a presentation. Staff does recommend approval subject to the conditions outlined in the draft ordinance. Since zoning board, a few conditions have changed and discussions have been made so that the applicant does agree with those conditions, and we've made some specific changes that are outlined in the draft ordinance that you can see there. Without further ado, I will let the applicant go ahead and present, and let us know if you have any questions. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Wayne Arnold with Key Grady Minor &amp; Associates. I'm a certified professional planner, and I'm here representing Madison Capital Group, who are the owners of the property. We have our team of folks here. Todd Blakely is with Madison Capital. We have Neil Montgomery, our general counsel for land use. Mike Dellett from our office is a professional engineer working on the case. We have Ted Trish, who has prepared the traffic analyses, and Marco Espinar is our biologist who's worked on the project. So we will be here to answer any questions you may have that we don't address during our presentation. So this property has been known as the Benita 75 Project for a number of years. We've been involved with it. We were involved in the original commercial zoning for the property. It is in your interchange, commercial, future land use category, which allows both residential, commercial, and some light industrial-type land uses. Over time, you know, the, the 268,000 square feet that was originally approved for a shopping center-type development and some, potentially some indoor self-storage, times have changed. I think we all realize the residential demand is, is huge right now, and the Madison Capital Group builds rental apartments throughout the state of Florida, and they have several examples that have been built successfully. And one of our deviations related to parking is based on some of their local examples. But this property, you can see, it's, it's essentially undeveloped. It had several home sites on it over the years. They've been demolished. And this is a little bit wider view, just so you see the context of it. So that's the City Mattress Facility to our east. In between us and, and that facility is another mixed-use project called St. James Project that some of you may remember. And then to the south, we have the developing Burnwood Facilities. So as Mary indicated, we're substantially changing the request to be a large CPD to a residential project that would contain 252 multifamily units and just about 10,000 square feet of commercial. The commercial tract, I'll show you that on the site plan in just a moment, but it's a substantial decrease in traffic that's associated with the change we're making, which we think is beneficial, obviously, to Benita Beach Road, because that seems to have been a concern for many people over the years. This is the approved master plan. It showed a typical shopping center-type layout with several out parcels that would front along Orr Road. Our proposed master plan becomes a large residential pod in the middle of the project and here. The commercial piece is essentially this 1.4-acre parcel that is here. As part of this, we're realigning a portion of Orr Road. It was previously realigned to go through the middle of the shopping center, frontage road. We're realigning it now to go around the commercial parcel, and then that allows us to keep Orr Road in its current configuration for the balance of Orr Road frontage. This is a color exhibit, shows you a little bit more detailed likelihood of how this is going to develop. You can see that the commercial parcel, as I pointed out, is the orange parcel here that's at the intersection of Miller Road, Orr Road, and Benita Beach Road. And then this is the Orr Road realignment around it, and then it goes on up to the three homes that are located there, as well as the F dot drainage ditch that's there. On the site, site features, the residential buildings are outlined in brown. The access to the site will largely be an extension of Miller Road up to a leasing office for the multifamily building. And then north of that becomes our preservation area. There was a floodplain compensation area that's going to be required here, and that was part of a water management district permit that was previously approved, and we'll be going back through that process again to reestablish that. We've established site development regulations that work. I'm not going to go through all of those, but they're pretty typical, and they allow us to have essentially four-story apartment buildings and two-story commercial-type buildings. We are asking for several deviations, as Mary mentioned. I'm not going to go through all of those, but Mary did mention that we've worked on a couple of those since the zoning board. We mentioned to them that we'd like to continue talking to staff about signage, because what we wanted to do, since the commercial component is out in front, we wanted the ability to have a shared sign that we could announce the residential component and the commercial component on the commercial tract itself. We also, as part of that deviation, wanted to have a signage along Orr Road that would be visible from eastbound traffic on Benita Beach Road. So staff is supporting that deviation. We have some exhibits that we can show you if you're interested in seeing the scale of that, but it's essentially a 10-by-12 sign that would be built, and it would be visible, obviously, from Benita Beach Road. We have such a limited frontage on Benita Beach Road. If you go back to the site plan, you can see our, our window on Benita Beach Road is essentially at that entrance at, at Miller Road. And I think you all are familiar that the median opening that was there has been closed in the last several weeks. One of the other deviations that we asked for was related to the bonus density agreement that's also in your packet tonight. And there's a discrepancy, and Derek can jump in if I get this wrong, but you have an administrative code that was written many years ago that deals with bonus density and the cash provision for that. You have land development code provisions that also deal with it. They don't really mesh very well together. There are some inconsistencies. So in essence, what our deviation is asked for is for us to have a payment for those fees. It's about $1.3 million that we would pay for our bonus units, and your code talks about having to pay those at the time of zoning, perhaps, or...
I'll, I'll jump in.
Okay, please do, Derek. Thanks.
So, so the, the entire premise of the cash contribution to the bonus density program was something that carried over from Lee County Code? Essentially, we adopted a program where you could have bonus density for actually providing affordable housing, or in the alternative, you could have bonus density for paying into a trust fund that the city manages to use with, with community partners for affordable housing. So the Benita 75 Project is using that latter program, and the city adopted these regulations in 2006, and then adopted an administrative code implementing those regulations. The problem is that the administrative code directly contradicts the land development code, and in that conflict, the land development code controls. So in speaking with, with the applicant and working it through and trying to figure out which rules apply, the bulk of the deviation that we got in the addendum on Monday is to make it comply with the administrative code. So essentially, you're tweaking your land development code for this project to make it in line with the administrative code that is, pretty much has all the details for someone to operate on this program. And the principal changes are this. You either do it off an appraised value, or you have to have a valid sales contract. I have confirmed that they have a valid sales contract. After the property closes, I'll confirm by looking through the doc stamps that the dollar amount that was in the contract is the actual dollar amount paid. That equates to a dollar figure that is for the cash contribution. So the deviation is to give them enough time to operate under that contract, and then in the agreement it provides that after a year, they'll have to go to get an appraisal. And if it goes beyond another year, and then we haven't been paid, a new appraisal. So it catches any changes in the market conditions prior to the payment. The payment itself, under the administrative code, can be at the, the development order or the first building permit. So the applicant has asked for the first building permit. That will be a change to the agreement that you have in front of them. The code requires the payment at zoning, so the payment today, but the actual density isn't realized until either the development permit or the building permit is issued. So what they've asked for is an extra deviation to say, we will pay the appropriate amount per your administrative code at the time of building permit. So that would be today reflected in the 1.316 figure, but that could change based on when the actual permit goes through. If the value of land has gone up, the actual contribution would go up as well. So it's a formula contained in our code.
And vice versa.
Correct. And I apologize, in the document you received on Monday, the, there was a question asked. It appears to say $1.36 million per unit. I have asked the applicant, they're not interested in continuing that. It would be a total of 1.36. So I've changed the agreement for the execution copy.
Derek, it can't go down, though, from the initial, what they paid for in the beginning.
It can go down under our administrative code. So what they've, what they've asked for is essentially for us to, to implement our administrative code with respect to them. And one element that is not covered in the administrative code, which is the additional time element, there, the code indicates that you have 120 days from the execution of a valid purchase and sale agreement. Well, no one can get through the zoning process, let alone the development order of the building process, 120 days. So the manager has authority to extend it up to a year, but I've incorporated that request into the actual application. So you'd be extending it for a year, and then I clarified the issue of after that year, it would be appraisal for one year, then another appraisal after a second year.
Okay. Please go through it, Mayor. Go ahead.
Mayor, I think as Mr. Rooney explained to you, that, that is the essence of our request. I think it requires a little bit of massaging of the language that was in the draft that came out before you, but I think he's explained our request very well, and we think it's a fair request because of the inconsistencies of the code. You can't get through a process in 120 days, and, and Madison Capital is, has a valid contract, they closed on the property this past week, so we think they've equally established the value. And if we go past a year before paying you, then we go back for the appraisal, and we think that's fair. So with that, that's, that's essentially, you know, our short presentation. This is going to be a very nice rental community. This is similar product that they have constructed elsewhere, and you can see that it'll have really nice amenity centers. And it is such a competitive market, you can't do anything but build nice communities. I mean, these rental communities in our area are well over 90% leased, so there are essentially zero availability in those. So we think this is good for both the applicant and for the city.
I do want to ask Mr. Arnold a question, and the question is, since the project was originally approved, because commercial, has commercial been approved at the Horizon Park to the south and Midtown, which has better access, both access to Benita Beach Road and to Benita Grand, that would take people commercial away from this site?
What Ms. Montgomery is indicating is, is true. You've, you've approved quite a bit of other commercial in the area. They do have better access, they have access to traffic signals. We're essentially going to be restricted to a right-in, right-out condition. That's really not conducive to the high volume of traffic that was associated with 168,000 square feet of retail. So with that, we think that traffic reduction, and the trip reduction that is associated with the request is, is a positive change. It's also, as I said, consistent with your comprehensive plan, and we've met your land development code provisions for rezonings of property. So we're happy to answer any questions you have or...
Mayor?
Yes.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Could you just clarify how you came up with the number of 57 bonus densities? How do you get that?
So the overall property is just under 21 acres. There's this tiny sliver owned by FDOT that's about .4 acres. So we excluded that from our calculations. So we assumed it's about 20.55 acres that we're allowed to utilize for density purposes. So the base density is 10 units an acre. So that times 10 equated to 209 units, or 205 units, excuse me. We're allowed to get up to 15 units an acre. The site plan that I'm showing you has about 252 units on it. So the delta there is 47 units above the 205 that we would be buying as bonus units.
And it's just based on density? You're taking the maximum density that's allowed, is that...
This equates to a little over 12 units per acre, so we're under the maximum. But I think as Mr. Rooney mentioned, when you do the math on the purchase price for the property, the bonus units to the city are about $1.316 million that you'll receive.
Mike, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I had a question about the Miller Road, especially the intersection. If you look at it now, because it's an improved dirt road, a lot of the dirt comes up out into the intersection there. So I was hoping maybe you guys would consider paving all the way to the edge of your property just to keep the dirt from coming out more. Because it shows that you end, you know, basically right where the entrance is for the residences. And if you were to look at the intersection now on satellite view or go out there, you see a lot of dirt and rocks coming up into that intersection. So I think it would just be a better product if you paved all the way down just to keep the dirt further down.
Yeah, our intent is to improve the Miller Road intersection from Benita Beach Road up to the northern entrance into the residential community here.
Yeah, I'm asking if you go all the way to the northern edge of your property.
All the way to here.
That way, the dirt gets brought up onto that area and not out into the area that all your residents will be driving through.
I think I might have to defer to title attorneys whether or not we have legal ability to improve that far. I don't know that we do. We've spoken to Mrs. Thompson up here and the other neighbors that live on, I think it's Survey Court or something like that. One of them would like the improvements, the other would not. So what we know we can control is up to our entrance. And, you know, the part, and I just, I didn't really explain it, but I should while I'm on the slide. The Orr Road realignment, right now Orr Road comes in about 50 feet off of Benita Beach Road. It doesn't meet any of your throat distance safety standards. So that relocation actually gets it to a location where you can have safe access to both the commercial and the residential.
Yeah, if you guys can look to see if there's a possibility of extending that a little further. Just because, like I said, if you look at the intersection now, that dirt just keeps coming out. So all your residents are going to be dealing with that, so.
One of the things I didn't say, but it's in your staff report, we'll be required to make that Miller Road portion meeting your complete street, so it'll have dual sidewalks and proper drainage and things like that. So to the extent we can make the transition to, if it remains gravel and dirt beyond our entrance, I think we can at least help with the problem of dirt and gravel coming all the way down to Benita Beach Road.
Yeah, I was just thinking more for your residents because they're going to have that issue of it being right there. And it looks like the road meanders onto your property and off of it, you know, halfway down and then again at the end.
Yeah, it does. It does meander.
So if there's a way to, you know, get with the property owners to see.
Okay, any else?
No, sir. Thank you.
A motion to approve.
Yeah, go.
Any more comments?
Wait a second.
Roll call.
Well, public hearing, I'm sorry. There's still be a public hearing on this item.
Anybody from the public who'd like to comment about this project?
Mr. Mayor, could I simply clarify that the motion includes the modifications to the bonus density agreement that Mr. Rooney...
So actually, what I'd like to do, Mr. Mayor, is the motion, as I understand, on the floor is to approve the zoning request. That will incorporate, unless there's any change by the council, that will incorporate the deviation which came out on Monday, which will be added as a new deviation within the schedule on the ordinance. And then I would ask for a second vote on the bonus density agreement.
Okay, let's have the first vote.
Okay. Councilmember Caramba?
About public hearing part?
Public hearing.
No, I don't, is there any, is there any members of the public which should speak on this item?
I announce at once. Okay.
Councilmember Caramba?
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilmember Corey?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Forbes?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
The second motion would be on the agreement with the changes I read into the record.
So moved. Second.
Yeah, vote. Any other comment about the motion? Okay, vote, please.
Councilmember Purdon?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilmember Corey?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Forbes?
Aye.
Councilmember Caramba?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, council.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, folks, and good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Okay. Move on to the consent agenda. We have nothing under nine, so we'll go to number 10.
Call F. Call F.
Call F.
Yeah.
Anything else?
I'm going to have a discussion on the item D, but that's discussion. I'll vote for it.
Okay, let's pass the other, the rest of them?
Yeah, I would like to talk on D as well.
So motion to approve with discussion on D and pulling F.
Yes.
Second.
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Carr?
You don't have to have a motion for the discussion because it's on the agenda. The motion is to approve everything but F.
Correct.
Okay.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilmember Corey?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Forbes?
Aye.
Councilmember Caramba?
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon?
Aye.
Okay, Fred, you want a discussion on number...
On the discussion, yeah, is somebody here from the YMCA?
Angel.
Angel.
Yeah. This is your, I really called for the discussion so people would understand better this relationship the city has and the great things a summer camp does.
Very good. Thank you, Fred.
And on the same note, my son goes to the YMCA summer camp currently, and it's been, it's been a pleasure. And after school over at the rec center, you guys do a really great job. Angel, since you've come to the Y, you've been a blessing.
Yeah, very good, Jesse. Next time ask me.
I'm sorry?
Next time ask me before you start talking.
It was the same agenda item.
Next time ask me before you start...
So, Angel, hi.
Hi.
There you go.
Yes, thank you very much for the time. So we value the partnership with the city to be able to offer after-school enrichment programs for the youth. We're getting ready for the next school year. We're currently accepting registration. This summer, we also had a wonderful summer program for kindergarteners through teens. They were involved in various activities where they learned, they played, they also had the opportunity to learn different life skills. This year, we had, compared to last year, we had a challenge where many of us may be aware that it's hard to find talent, to be able to hire and attract and retain talent. So this year, we implemented several things, compensation rates to be able to attract talent. Last year, we had a waitlist all summer long, and we were not able to serve as many families as we would like to. This year, we implemented paraprofessional rates as well as teacher rates, which allowed us to be able to serve many more families this summer. And so we look for the opportunity to continue the partnership to be able to offer the youth in the community and the family services, such as after-school and summer day camp programs.
Very good, very good. Thank you. Anything else?
No.
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mike wanted to discuss F.
Number 11.
No, item F. I pulled F.
You pulled F, I'm sorry, yes.
There were some concerns brought up during public comments. I just wanted to hear from community development.
Good evening, council. Mike Fee-Gunn with Community Development for the Record. I'll give you kind of the high-level explanation, but I'm probably going to defer to Derek for some of the details regarding state statute for mobile food vending. Long story short, the state has decreed that counties and cities no longer have the authority to permit individual mobile food vendors. What you do have the authority to do is to permit locations where vendors could potentially go. So with that, what you have before you is essentially what you can ask for without violating state statute. You do have a map that shows the proposed locations of the vendors. You do have a copy of the completed application. You have a signed and sealed application that says that they will abide by state statute. And essentially, that's what you can ask for. So I understand the insurance requirement. There is a copy of the church insurance policy on there. If you were to ask them to name a specific vendor, again, you can't permit specific vendors, so that can't be a requirement, unfortunately. What makes it confusing is oftentimes when you see these applications, it's the vendor that's wanting to fill them out and do the proposal, as opposed to the owner of the property doing it. So that's probably where some of the confusion comes in. That was the case with this particular application, but all of the standards were met as far as what's outlined in the code, which is why you have a staff recommendation of approval. But if you have extra questions on what the statute says, I would defer to Derek on that.
The only thing I would add is that, yes, the legislature looked at the fact that many jurisdictions were regulating food trucks differently. The vast majority were regulating them on the actual truck themselves and some combination of the truck and the locations they could operate in. The state also regulates them as a food vendor. So the state enacted a regulation preempting local governments from regulating them by permits or licenses. So at this time, and I think the city changed its codes about a year or two ago, we regulate the location. So what we're saying is, you know, we don't care if it's Thai or Mexican or hot dogs or if the operator is, has a bad record. The issue is, is the location appropriate for food trucks? So that's what's before you today.
Okay, Mike, where is this location?
It's off of Terry Street. I believe it's 10951 East Terry Street is the address.
Terry and Imperial area.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
We have to approve this?
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd just like to have Derek clarify. I know we have a regulation for a location. Why is it at council? Why are we, are they just supposed to tell us about this? Or, I mean, what do we have in that regulation?
I mean, our regulation is fairly generic. It essentially says, we don't, we allow it in commercial areas, areas that would be appropriate otherwise for restaurants. It is prohibited in residential areas except under a special event permit, like you're going to have a birthday party and you want to have an ice cream truck out there. Or in the case of like a gated community that may have a community center and they have specifically authorized the use, that would be the other place where it's allowed. So it doesn't have to come to the council. If the council would like to change the direction, we can change the code so that it's approved administratively. But I think when we were going from a process where you were looking at individual permits and licenses to now locate the locations, I think that when we changed the code, we just kept it with the council because that's where it had been.
So the code says that it has to be approved at the council, even though we don't have any power to really change anything, you know, because there's a basic criterion if it's...
There's basic criteria and basic findings.
Yeah.
So if they meet the findings, they're entitled to it.
Right.
But you're the fact finder in this situation.
All right, so the staff comes and says they've met the basic, with our findings say that they met all the criteria and then they're recommending approval by the council, and that's what's happening here. Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
One question, yes, one question. Public comment, it was unclear as to what kind of restroom facilities would be there. Do we know? Is it going to be a porta potty or is it better than that?
They weren't proposing any portlets on the site plan, but then again, they don't necessarily have to. It just needs to be provided. At this time, I believe the understanding is they'll be able to use the church facilities.
See, I'm of the, I'm going to vote for this, but I'm of the opinion we ought to go back and look at this again because there are a few little threads that I think could be tightened up to make it a better, better for everybody, the public, the visual impact and all that.
Sure.
Then they're supposed to have bathroom facilities, right?
Mm-hmm.
But you can't, you don't have one for this.
They're going to have to meet that requirement.
So we can't approve it?
No, they're going to meet that requirement.
Uh-huh.
They're going to meet that requirement.
They will be able to have, they will have bathroom facilities.
Yeah, but to my point, that's one of the areas that we ought to tighten up. Porta potties are either okay or not. Right now, they're okay, but I personally think that would be something I would like to see done different, to make it a better improvement for the public, the visual, people driving by. That's just my opinion.
Does it have to be removed every day? The truck has to move every day?
The truck would have to be removed at the end of business hours every day, correct?
About the porta potty?
If that's what they choose to do, those as well. But right now, like I said, they're going to be using the church facilities.
Okay, well, you got that in writing, right? Okay, a motion to approve?
Second.
Any other comments?
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilmember Corey?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Forbes?
Yes.
Councilmember Caramba?
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Can I ask staff, Mr. Mayor, can I ask staff a question on this?
I mean...
Can I ask a question of staff on this?
Sure, go ahead.
Out of curiosity, do you know what kind of food it's going to be?
Dominican.
Dominican? All right, okay. That'll work, that'll work.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I have three first readings, and then I have three second readings and public hearings next. With your permission, I'll start the first, the first reading on an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs authorizing the lease of real property known as Imperial Crossing in the old 41 downtown and providing for an effective date.
Motion moved second.
I'd like to make some comments on this, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
The key point in terms of the lease, or what's called a lease, is whether or not there is fair value being exchanged under the terms of the lease by Baron Coyer to the city for the fair value of the ground. There has been changes in standards, accounting standards that the city has to abide by, issued by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, which says that all leases are financing Therefore, in order to comply with a financing transaction, we need to know the value of the property being subject to the lease. We have some old sales data or responses to RFPs that go back to '20 and '21 maybe, but certainly nothing more current. What's necessary is to be able to discount the stream of rental income that we would get against the value of the property. And make sure that the value that we receive is at least equal to or greater than the value of the property. Now, the accounting standards say that you can't do that with variable rents, which means that if Baron Coyer wants to be paid a percent of the rentals it receives from the apartments apartments and the commercial space, that does not create a fair value exchange. So there's... The only way you get to a fair value exchange is for Baron Collier to be obligated to a set rental price during the term of the lease. Otherwise, the city does not know how much rental income it's going to receive, because it has no way to forecast the amount of rents to be received during the period. It could, in fact, receive nothing if the project goes down the tubes. So I therefore would recommend that the city retain, under its present consulting contract with CBRE, the advice of CBRE with respect to what's called ground leases. I would also request that the city receive advice from financial advisors, whether it's our banks or otherwise, with respect to the discount rate to be used to determine the present value. That discount rate should be what the city would charge Baron Collier if we were to finance the acquisition. And I would also advise that we get an appraisal, so we know what the value is that we have to recover. And I also advise that we involve our accounting firm, the ones who audit our books, to make sure that the agreement meets the accounting standards that we're going to have to report on, which become effective September 30th of 2022. So I am not in favor of pushing this forward at this time. I think council needs to have a workshop with advisors to understand what the requirements of the lease agreement has to be, so that we know how it's going to impact our financial statements, so that we know the risk that the city is taking with respect to the rental payments. If we are on a total variable rental payment plan, we're obviously taking a lot of risk that those, what we think are gonna be the rental payments, will actually occur. If we have a set portion of the rental payment, then obviously Baron Collier's taking the risk of the project is going to be successful enough to pay the set amount of the rent. So I think the council needs to understand what the agreement has to say, and go through some of the guts of what the agreement needs to have in its contents before we move to second hearing. Right now, we're moving to second hearing, I don't think with the full appreciation of the complexities of a ground lease, or the accounting aspects as far as they impact our financial statements as a city, and how much risk a variable lease agreement carries to the city. So my recommendation is, we have a workshop, we bring the people in, we do it fairly quickly, doesn't need to drag out, but we get together and sit around the table and have our advisors, have Derek cover all this. So that's my comments. Mr. Mayor, I would propose that we move on the first reading, but we don't have to be the second reading. We can postpone it, and we let our head of finance, our city attorney investigate if everything that's said is exactly right, and we gotta do that. If we don't have to do that, the council needs to know that. So we ought to be able to find that out easy before the next reading.
So we don't... At the current moment, we have just received a term sheet from Baron Collier. I had asked for one to be... So we'd have it for the first reading. We do not have a draft lease yet. I'll be working on that, and that will be coming... So I don't have a date for the second reading. I will... I can relay that we have spoken with Councilman Corey, and Lisa has agreed that we need to look into the accounting mechanisms, gonna consult with our auditors on how that will be reported, and we are also gonna be talking with CBRE. I would request direction on the appraisal, because that could take some additional time. But to be clear, there's two elements. There's the legal elements, and then there's the business terms. So I'll be working on the legal sides of the agreement, and there will be some provision in there for when the property is not in utilization, so that we are receiving some rent. But what Councilman Corey's discussing is the business terms of it, and that is really for the council to determine with the advice of advisors.
Does that a motion, Fred? Fred?
Yeah, well, is that...
To move it to the second.
Is that okay with you? I'll make the motion if that works for you, Derek.
It works for me, but when I said, we don't have a date set for the second reading, so...
We don't have to do that regularly.
Additionally, Madam Council, we are prepared to make some outreach on an hourly rate for CBRE to give us an independent analysis of any terms that, as we move forward, is a business analysis of the ground lease, so they can provide an opinion. And I did talk with Lisa about reaching out to the city's contracted auditors to ensure that we would be following any proper protocol there, and we can report that back.
Jesse.
Yes, I think this is something that can definitely be vetted between now and second reading. And frankly, you know, this is one of 47 reasons that we've heard on why it can't happen. So we're 20 years into this, we are about $60 million into this, we have the best developer in the state, and we are working through this, but to pull it now because of the lease situation, you understand, we're talking three... It's not even up to 3%. Is it 3%?
Two to two.
Two to two and a half percent total is what we're talking about, of return on commercial, which isn't even gonna be in the ground for five years, and it's a 99-year lease. So we're worried about that amount of money in regard... This is, again, this is one of 47 reasons why we shouldn't move forward, but if we stop progress every time somebody has a thought that it might be... We just saw a contract a week ago that supposedly made it so that we legally, as a city, couldn't do something, and it turned out to be completely false. We've had so many situations like that. We can't let speculative rumors and thought processes derail us when we have the mechanism of a two weeks for a reason, and we have very competent staff. So we get through the first vote. If we find that we can't get answers that we want, then that would be the appropriate time to pull an emergency break. But pulling the emergency break before we even get to the first reading? Why? Why would we? We've put too much work into it, and this isn't rushing anything. We've been doing it for 20 years. This isn't rushing it. So I am in favor of moving forward to second reading.
May I respond to that, Mr. Mayor?
I mean...
May I respond to Jesse?
Sure.
Jesse, I'm not against the project. What I am concerned about is that we're able, as a council, to tell people that it's a fair deal.
And we can.
And we can.
Why can't we?
Well...
If we go with total variable rents, which is a percentage of future revenues, we cannot call that, under our accounting rules, a lease.
Okay. Again, this is something... We have two weeks and very competent staff. We can work that out. If you're right, we'll work it out.
Can I step in? I don't think we're gonna be hearing this in two weeks. I'm gonna just step right in and say that right now, because until the draft of the agreement, and it's gonna go back.
All I'm saying...
We have plenty of time.
All I'm saying, Jesse, is that it's easier to deal with what is needed in the terms now, as opposed to getting down the road and trying to clean up a document.
I hear you. That's an argument for the second reading, though.
Well, we, you know...
When we see the details.
Yep. Because that's the point, is if we didn't even get to pass first reading, we're not even getting to the point where we can go through these details to the next one. So it's that this is a necessary component, and if there's things that need to be vetted, we'll vet them. And I assure you, staff heard everything you said, and they're gonna make sure that you are not correct, and if you are, we'll figure out how to deal with it. But in the meantime, stopping it because there might potentially be a problem, you can't manage a city that way.
Well, I will tell you that there's more than a "might be" problem with respect to the terms that are set forth in the term sheet.
Okay. We'll see.
We'll see.
I just would like, because this is the first time I heard about this, could staff, please provide me with some details of what Chris just said, you know, and what is impacting. I'm in favor of moving it to the second reading with leaving the time period, as you had described, Derek, open, to explore with these experts, to see whether... We have to include the concerns that have been raised by Councilman Corey in the final lease. That's what we're working on, and it's at least in progress, as far as I can understand, so I don't think there's really a problem. But thank you, Chris, Corey, for alerting us to this, because certainly, I mean, I never heard any of this discussion before. And I'm confident that the staff will address the professionals, and whether we... I don't think we really need a workshop in it, but I think we need a thorough discussion at whenever we do have our second reading on this, about these items that have been raised up. And I want to see it in writing, because I didn't quite follow everything. I think I understand what he was saying, and I'd like to check into it myself.
I'll be happy to get with it.
Okay, thank you.
That's a motion, and Jesse, second. And we have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Corey?
No.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Forbes?
Aye.
Councilmember Cumbah?
Aye.
Councilmember Pardon?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye. Thank you. Motion, Paris.
Okay. The next item is an ordinance of the city... As a first reading, an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs extending the electric utility franchise for Florida Power and Light Company, and providing for an effective date.
Make a motion?
Second.
Move it.
Anybody commented on it? It's the same rate, right?
Correct.
The same rate as it currently is. Offer a vote?
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Forbes?
Aye.
Councilmember Cumbah?
Aye.
Councilmember Pardon?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilmember Corey?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay. Next ordinance is a first reading of an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, relating to the local communication services tax rate, providing for intent, providing for local communication services tax rate, providing for notice to the Department of Revenue, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. This similarly is extending the current rate.
So moved. Second.
Any comment? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Forbes?
Aye.
Councilmember Cumbah?
Aye.
Councilmember Pardon?
Can you read it again, please? An ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, relating to the local communication services tax rate, providing for intent, providing for local communication services tax rate, providing for notice to the Department of Revenue, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
First reading.
Aye, first reading.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilmember Corey?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Okay. Next item is a second reading and public hearing of an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, approving the petition by Benita Springs Utilities Incorporated to increase its water to aid in new construction fees and certain miscellaneous service charges, and providing for an effective date. So you've already had some discussion on this. This is the additional tariff request by BSU to deal with cost of doing business, and this is only applying to miscellaneous fee charges, like, and the materials you said, I think there's like connections to water meters, and for aid in new construction. So new development, essentially the impact fees that they pay. I believe that BSU representatives are here, if you have any questions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Any public comment?
Public comment? Offer a vote, please.
Councilmember Cumbah?
Aye.
Councilmember Pardon?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember... I'm sorry, Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilmember Corey?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Forbes?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Next item is a second reading and public hearing of an ordinance of amending the Benita Springs Code of Ordinances, Chapter 24, flood hazard reduction to clarify and update definitions and regulations as necessary to remain in the National Flood Insurance Program, providing for conflicts of law, providing for codification and scripters errors, and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any public comment?
Public comment? Okay, Alex.
I had been in contact last year with Derek Wiley, district conservationist with National Flood Insurance, and this is more concerning where the bamboo property is, and the downtown area. And basically, what he told me, this was 820... This was just about a year ago, and it's zoned in an AE area, but the floodway of which a portion of the bamboo property is in, is located as an AEX, and that's what's done... The NOAA was National Oceanic Administration satellites were the ones to develop this, and I have the paper from that. And it showed that there would be six feet elevation on the bamboo property, and recommended a 10 feet above that for flooding prevention. So that, I think, needs to be determined when we do any final agreement with Baron Collier Corporation on the... So that's just my own opinion, for what it's worth.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion and a second?
Right.
Do we have a vote, please?
Sorry, who made the motion and who seconded?
I made the motion.
And I seconded.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Pardon?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilmember Corey?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Forbes?
Aye.
Councilmember Cumbah?
Aye.
Thank you. I would like to take a break for about 7 o'clock, or five minutes to 7:00, and then we have a long presentation.
Which is it? Five minutes to 7:00 or 7:00?
You'll be late anyway.
Yeah, you made leave.
Postal zones, substantial damage, and substantial improvement, providing for conflict of law, severability, codification, scripters errors, and an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay.
Any public comment?
Public comment of what?
Vote, please.
And roll call.
On the last public hearing?
You mean this...
F.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Alex Grant again. Sorry about that. Basically, what concerns me is I'm also, besides my degree of master's in soil science, I have certified pest control operator, and in this latest issue, July of 2022, the pest control industry, which is, I'm a member of, and this is rather conservative... of, and this is a rather conservative group, but the basic theme of this is that the pest control industry generally is extremely concerned about the impact of climate change that we are having to the pest control industry. And they feel basically that this is a high priority item that would be impacting our industry. And obviously, it's impacting everybody else, too, and that we need to pay extremely serious attention to climate change. This is basically in the United States, and of course, we are in an area that is very susceptible to climate change problems and being in southwest Florida. And so that is something, hopefully, the building industry and coastal high acid area, et cetera, you got to look out for Mother Nature. Thank you.
Okay, we have a vote?
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilmember Corey?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Forbes?
Aye.
Councilmember Cumbah?
Aye.
Councilmember Pardon?
Aye.
Now we can go.
Six fifty-seven.
Okay. Good job.
Return.
You're doing that on purpose.
Ooh.
Lady.
Okay.
A few meetings ago, you had a presentation by the Historical Society regarding the Banyan Tree in downtown. At that meeting, two things happened once. One is the council asked the Historical Society to come back with some ideas. We've attached their diagram for you. Unfortunately, the president of the Historical Society is unwell this evening, so he couldn't be here. He's going to ask Councilmember Corey to sponsor him at either the next meeting or when he can come back. But in the meantime, there was a second aspect of that as well. Council directed staff to begin some visioning for this parcel and to give you some ideas of what we could see there, incorporating the idea of lighting the Banyan Tree as well. So we did work with DPZ. They're going to show you a couple of different scenarios. I wanted to reiterate that we do have some funding in the CIP to begin some design work, but any future projects, we would have to bring back with cost estimates and proposals. So all of this tonight is conceptual to get your feedback on, so you can let us know the direction you'd like us to go. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Galena.
Good evening, City Council, City Manager, Galena Tachiva, DPZ Co-Design in Miami. I'm very happy to be back here, many familiar faces and some new ones. We are, as the City Manager mentioned, we were tasked with exploring some ideas about the kind of the park in the center of your downtown with the Banyan Tree as its focal point. The ideas are several in number, and we were thinking, we were trying to think holistically. We were trying to think about the edges of the park, about the usefulness of the park, about its meaning, civic meaning for your downtown and the whole city. Usually, great cities and great places have parks and central locations, and they're known for their, for their elements, you know, kind of important civic elements. And we usually go back in kind of in history and look at precedents. So I will show you a few of those and then some ideas which we put together. Some of the main design principles which we were inspired by are, you know, the focal point of a civic place or a park, and in your case, the Banyan Tree, which is, which is 100 years old, we were told, or somewhere there. It is, it is a kind of this focal point. The axial vistas, which are representing from views from different corners in the park, how people approach the park. Currently, it's a kind of an open green area with certain elements on the edges, but you know, basically pedestrian connectivity between these points of interest around the edges of the park are difficult to access. So we looked at those. Multiple uses and multiple spaces, uses by children, uses for a kind of more active participation or for more leisure, also these are important things, active and passive areas, and well-defined edges and gateways. And some of these examples, we are just showing, for example, John Nolan planned for Venice, Florida. We were inspired by some of the famous home stadium plans. It's this one shown in Fort Green Park in Brooklyn or in other places. So many of the features and the elements which we incorporated are either things which we, which we heard that are necessary for you, and some ideas came from looking at other examples around the country, some good examples like shade structures, climbing, climbing tree or treehouse for kids. We heard that, you know, it's not desirable that people and kids climb on the tree, so we wanted to kind of divert their interest into maybe something different, like a climbing structure, a special garden, for example, as I said, perimeter fence and gateways, park shelters and pavilions, splash fountains, spray park, floor murals and medallions, tree lighting options. So all of these are illustrated. I will show you some examples of these structures and elements as they were done in other places. For example, a shade structure. It can be a very simple shading, colorful, artful element, which is a functional, durable, and of course, provides solar and rain protection, which is the most important thing here in Florida. A climbing tree and a treehouse, also it can be a simple structure or more complex, more complicated, like this one, for example, in the Naples Children's Museum or something, or some, something simpler with ledgers, slides, and some netting. A special garden, which can be a butterfly garden or educational garden with some native collections, or edible gardens. These are all examples. The edges, whether it's a perimeter fence and a special gateway, or a small stone or masonry type of gate structure, it, these are all examples from other places. The pickets can be metal, they can be wood, they can be composite PVC, you know, or stone posts. And we will show you how we are looking at those. Our examples are very general, and different materials and different, different elements can be incorporated. However, we wanted to show you some examples from other places and how they handle, for example, a park shelter or a community pavilion. A park space is really nice when it has such a building, and currently, you have a building, a building there. And we know that you're doing explorations currently, whether the building is sustainable to stay there for a long time. So we will give you different options with the building staying or the building taken out or other, other things. But these are, for example, some of these community pavilions, which the current
Okay.
Okay. A few meetings ago, you had a presentation by the Historical Society regarding the Banyan Tree in downtown. At that meeting, two things happened once. One is the council asked the Historical Society to come back with some ideas. We've attached their diagram for you. Unfortunately, the president of the Historical Society is unwell this evening, so he couldn't be here. He's going to ask Councilmember Corey to sponsor him at either the next meeting or when he can come back. But in the meantime, there was a second aspect of that as well. Council directed staff to begin some visioning for this parcel and to give you some ideas of what we could see there, incorporating the idea of lighting the Banyan Tree as well. So, we did work with DPZ. They're going to show you a couple of different scenarios. I wanted to reiterate that we do have some funding in the CIP to begin some design work, but any future projects, we would have to bring back with cost estimates and proposals. So, all of this tonight is conceptual to get your feedback on, so you can let us know the direction you'd like us to go. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Galena.
Good evening, City Council, City Manager. Galena Tachiva, DPZ Co-Design in Miami. I'm very happy to be back here. Many familiar faces and some new ones. We are, as the City Manager mentioned, we were tasked with exploring some ideas about the kind of the park in the center of your downtown with the Banyan Tree as its focal point. The ideas are several in number, and we were thinking, we were trying to think holistically. We were trying to think about the edges of the park, about the usefulness of the park, about its meaning, civic meaning, for your downtown and the whole city. Usually, great cities and great places have parks and central locations, and they're known for their elements, you know, kind of important civic elements. And we usually go back in kind of in history and look at precedents. So, I will show you a few of those and then some ideas which we put together. Some of the main design principles which we were inspired by are, you know, the focal point of a civic place or a park, and in your case, the Banyan Tree, which is 100 years old, we were told, or somewhere there. It is a kind of this focal point. The axial vistas, which are representing from views from different corners in the park, how people approach the park. Currently, it's a kind of an open green area with certain elements on the edges. But, you know, basically pedestrian connectivity between these points of interest around the edges of the park are difficult to access, so we looked at those. Multiple uses and multiple spaces, uses by children, uses for a kind of more active participation or for more leisure. Also, these are important things, active and passive areas. And well-defined edges and gateways. And some of these examples, we are just showing, for example, John Nolan planned for Venice, Florida. We were inspired by some of the famous Olmstadian plans. It's this one shown in Fort Green Park in Brooklyn or in other places. So, many of the features and the elements which we incorporated are either things which we heard that are necessary for you, and some ideas came from looking at other examples around the country. Some good examples like shade structures, climbing tree or treehouse for kids. We heard that, you know, it's not desirable that people and kids climb on the tree, so we wanted to kind of divert their interest into maybe something different, like a climbing structure, a special garden, for example. As I said, perimeter fence and gateways, park shelters and pavilions, splash fountains, spray park, floor murals and medallions, tree lighting options. So, all of these are illustrated. I will show you some examples of these structures and elements as they were done in other places. For example, a shade structure. It can be a very simple shading, colorful, artful element, which is a functional, durable, and of course, provides solar and rain protection, which is the most important thing here in Florida. A climbing tree and a treehouse. Also, it can be a simple structure or more complex, more complicated, like this one, for example, in the Naples Children's Museum, or something simpler with ledgers, slides, and some netting. A special garden, which can be a butterfly garden or educational garden with some native collections, or edible gardens. These are all examples. The edges, whether it's a perimeter fence and a special gateway or a small stone or masonry type of gate structure. These are all examples from other places. The pickets can be metal, they can be wood, they can be composite PVC, you know, or stone posts. And we will show you how we are looking at those. Our examples are very general, and different materials and different elements can be incorporated. However, we wanted to show you some examples from other places and how they handle, for example, a park shelter or a community pavilion. A park space is really nice when it has such a building. And currently, you have a building there. And we know that you're doing explorations currently, whether the building is sustainable to stay there for a long time. So, we will give you different options, with the building staying or the building taken out or other things. But these are, for example, some of these community pavilions, which the current police substation can be turned into, into these. Whether, you know, they provide covered outdoor and indoor conditioned space. You know, porches and arcades and gallery space, you know, are very important. And currently, this building doesn't have this, you know, it has a small entry feature only. And they can be in different architectural syntax or different architectural styles, whether it's old Florida versus contemporary, two-level, one-level. So, there is a great variety of examples. Splash fountains and spray parks. We heard that that's kind of on your menu list. They're very, they have been very popular, especially in Florida with our weather. It's a kind of a celebration of water, celebration of coolness in a hot summer. They can be brick and stone pavers, mosaic tiles, tinted concrete, all of these different options which you can choose. And you will have most likely a landscape architect onboard later when you decide into which direction you would like, and the specific materials will be chosen then. These are examples from West Palm Beach, Winter Garden, Peoria, and Hollywood Beach, Florida. Floor murals and medallions, you know, these are things which are, which can be done directly on the pavement, and they can incorporate some community engagement. Children or, you know, local artists can participate in creating such murals and art projects. Tree lighting options. They are from the very modest ones to the very elaborate ones, with simple, starting with simple white uplights, you know, which the tree itself is really gorgeous and it's really quite amazing. So, even a simple uplighting may be very effective. But you can also incorporate multicolor projectors. Decorative hanging fixtures is also something which can be done if they are light and subtle and without, you know, damaging the tree, obviously. And also, you know, string lights. You can also have the so-called, incorporate the so-called digital art. Or in some places, they have even festivals and special events called digital graffiti, where not only buildings around the edges of a park, but also the tree itself can become this canvas for quite amazing patterns and imagery, even moving imagery, like animations, for example. These are examples from our projects, Windsor and Ellis Beach. These are our projects in Florida, where there was special illumination and this digital art, which incorporated, you know, buildings and trees and hedges. So, you can do this on different, on many different surfaces. So, we will go directly into our presentation, into our ideas. This is the existing conditions. Obviously, the historic Banyan Tree, the public library on the eastern, its eastern edge, which is great. I mean, a public civic big building on the edge of a park, it's a rare thing, and it really needs to be celebrated, and this park is, can become a focal point. It's currently, from our observation, when we were here, it's not well utilized. It's a kind of an underutilized space. It's the River Park on the other side is probably more often utilized. The Community Policing Fallen Officers Memorial is an important element which we are giving special attention. The police substation, as I mentioned, that it's being studied, whether it's a viable structure. And then, the Blue Star Memorial Highway Plaque and the Bonita Springs Time Capsule on the corner, and the Rotary Clock on the southwest corner. So, these are the existing elements. This is in plan. You know all of this very well, so I'm not going to go in detail. But just additional elements are the bus shelter, which we paid attention to as well. You know, on the other, on the other sides, we have the Riverside Park and the farmer's market, which happens on the other southwest corner. And this is, this, of course, this is the aerial was the existing conditions, transferred into a drawing for the purposes of this study. And then, one idea which we had early on, we heard that there was a potential future parking allocated within the park, which we were kind of surprised to hear. So, we took it into consideration. There were potential future parking spaces, about 24, which were allocated in the southeast corner of the park. I mean, taking almost like a quarter of this park. So, what we did, we tried to find other ways to incorporate more parking, to provide a little bit more parking if you need it. We believe that you have plenty of parking in the downtown area. You have a lot of parallel parking, a lot of diagonal parking, really great infrastructure which you have been incorporating in the past decade or so. So, what we looked at is to utilize some of the green patches which are between the diagonal parking on the edges. And by doing that, and this drawing shows with yellow, with yellow markers, basically the spaces, the extra spaces which we can create. And by doing that, only on the periphery, you can add about 22 parking spaces. Instead of putting them in the middle of your park, or taking a quarter of the park for parking, we just utilize the edges. So, you know, we are two parking spots short, but I think that it's worth the effort. The design options. We have first option, which is a kind of the more radical solution of taking out the building, the substation, if it's not a viable structure and you consider that it's not necessary to have a building in the park. This is a kind of a lighter version. So, the police station is replaced with green space, with playground and kids' splash fountain. The, I will, at the intersection of the four new paths, you can see the four paths in east-west direction and in north-south direction, basically providing pedestrian connectivity between Old 41 Road and the bus station and the public library. If somebody wants to go through the park, you can go, you know, leisurely walk through this organic pathway, and you will see the tree on your right and go by other things. You can, you know, use some of the benches or enjoy the splash park, you know, if you have children. So, this children's area is a kind of in the northern, in the northern area, in central to the park. And then, this is also, you know, the orange, the orange markers show the extra spaces, the 22 spaces. It's a kind of zoom in a little bit further into the plan. So, we have, the elements here are, obviously, the Banyan Tree is there. The police station is removed. The Rotary Clock Plaza remains. You know, the Rotary, the clock is a feature on the entrance. The Memorial Plaza is four in the northwest corner, where we, basically, we move the current, the memorial which you have. We move it there, so it's incorporated, and you will see a three-dimensional representation in this. We call it the memorial corner, where also the time capsule is, and you have also the other, the other element. The new playground is with the number five, where there is the shaded area and also the climbing structure. And on the other side, under seven, is the splash, is the splash fountain. And then, in the center is this medallion, number nine, in color, which can be either temporary, you know, something which is an art piece, which can be changed, let's say, several years. You know, the community gets together and paints a new mural, or it can be, it can consist of something more durable. So, these are some of the views. This is an aerial view from the corner of Reynold's and Reynold Street and Felt Avenue. Basically, the green space with the splash fountain. Right in the, kind of the terminated vista of this axial view is the Banyan Tree. You see the parking on the edges, the structure, also the shading structure on one side. This is the entrance, the view from the Reynold Street. You can see the playground on the right side, the splash fountain on the left side, and the Banyan Plaza. This is the Memorial Plaza from the corner of Old 41 and Reynold's. The corner where basically the Community Policing Fallen Officers Memorial is put on the corner in a very, a kind of prominent way. So, you can see it, you know, it's on the edge, but it's becoming part of the, basically, of the, receives presence within the downtown, a more prominent presence. And it is combined with the Blue Star Memorial Highway Plaque and the Time Capsule, the Bonita Springs Time Capsule. So, this whole area becomes the memorial, the Memorial Plaza corner. So, this is option one. We did another option where we preserved the, we preserved the police station. If you decide that the building is worth preserving as a kind of a community, a community space, we believe that it needs to be spruced up. It has to be obviously renovated and added some kind of exterior space, four porches on all sides, because it is a building which cannot have, almost cannot have a back. Right now, when with the new pedestrian connectivity of pathways in both directions, you need a building which is almost like a jewel in the middle of the park, you know, right across from the Banyan Tree to be useful, with shaded porches on four sides. And let me just zoom in. You can see it here clearly. This is the police substation is number two. The orange, in orange color are the porches, the new added pieces. You can see benches along the pedestrian, the pedestrian paths, benches which are basically look on both directions. One is, you know, people can sit overlooking the pathway or they can, or they can observe the Banyan Tree, especially in the evening when there will be some special lighting. The playground remains in the same space, more or less the same space, under number five. And the medallion which we were talking about, which was before, kind of in the central position, this time is right in front of the community building, under number seven, the splash fountain with the kind of a medallion feature. And again, here, this is actually an interesting element. If you look at the, on the right side, right in front of the library, is a different proposal for parking. If you do not like the idea of fitting the parking on the edges of the park, this is an idea basically creating a, almost like a slip lane, which is under number nine, and from where you access a row of head-in parking. And there are about 20 and a few more spaces. So, that's, that's another option. But it's again, it's a kind of trimming the park on the east side. So, it's taking a little bit of park space, which we don't necessarily recommend, but we wanted to give you that option, this option as well. This parking solution can be combined with almost any of the other, of the first one. You can combine it with the first. Or the solution with the perimeter parking, you can combine it with this solution where you keep the, you keep the police station. So, this is, we wanted to create for you like, almost like a kit of parts, so you can pick and choose what you would like to see. And these are some of the views. This is the view from basically of Banyan Plaza at the corner of Reynold Streets and Felt Avenue, with the splash, with the splash fountain is on the corner in this, in this case, with the new community, a kind of the spruced-up community building with the porches. And then, this is the view of the plaza with the playground on the right and the splash fountain on the left. And you see in the kind of pale yellow, we put a little bit of color to basically differentiate the building, with the four porches on four sides. We tried to be very minimal with our suggestions, not to go with, you know, incredibly expensive or, you know, multimillion-dollar, you know, proposals with the kind of the most minimal, but the most effective tools and elements, which will make this place really useful and meaningful and also a kind of civic importance for your downtown and all of Bonita Springs. This is an approach from the library and view of the remodeled police substation. And the thing is that I think that I, okay. And this is option, option three. Option three is the most ambitious, where we add buildings. We take away the police substation, but we add some buildings. And you can see here, the corner in the northeast corner, that we added a couple of new buildings, a kind of almost like a courtyard complex. Small buildings, they are not large buildings, again, with porches facing, facing the splash fountain. But, you know, they are more ambitious because we are proposing two buildings and then a kind of a gateway with, which can be a bathrooms on both sides, and you can terminate, a kind of we really strengthen the axial, the axial view towards the Banyan Tree. The whole composition of this park and one of these historic parks which I showed you was, the composition was the diagonal, so it's very similar because of the position of the Banyan Tree in the south, in the southwest corner. In this case, we also propose in the southeast corner, a secret garden. You know, it can be one of these gardens, whether it's of some educational activity for educational exhibit. It can be a very effective butterfly garden. There are many of those around Florida. And here, this one, here it's a little bit enlarged. Again, you know, the playground is very similar in very similar location. What changes more dramatically is the addition of these new buildings. Again, we have the medallion, the mural medallion, number 10 is in the, in kind of in the middle. And again, you can see that in this particular case, the general, the general movement of pedestrian movement remains east-west, you know, from the bus station all the way to the, to the library and also in north-south direction from the new development rooftops, rooftops?
Rooftop at Rupes.
Yes, you know, all the way to the south. So, these are probably the most important elements of this. And you can see here the view. This is the view from, again, the same corner. We wanted to give you the same view, so you can, you can compare with the two buildings on the sides, with the building, you know, the kind of the bathrooms, which are creating, creating this archway through which you see the Banyan Tree. This is a nice little complex which can be rented for weddings, you know, if you have, if you have some community meetings for different events as they come along. You can see the edges are showing a fence with the small stone elements on the corners, similar to one of these structures which you have in Riverside Park as well. And then, so this is basically the axial view through the Banyan Court from the center of Reynold's and Felt Street, a kind of from the, basically, street view, a pedestrian, from the pedestrian view. This is the space which is shaped by the three structures of similar character, of similar architecture as the prior building, which was there, kind of in memory of this building. This is the approach. This is the pedestrian approach from the bus shelter, basically going, going east to the library with the Banyan Tree on your, on your right. This is the secret garden, which can be, as I said, you know, butterfly garden or for educational purposes. And we have, we have some ideas about the tree lighting, which can be from the most minimal to the most elaborate, you know, going all the way to, you know, even digital animation and a digital art. This is the existing tree, and we did some night, some night pictures. And, you know, this is, for example, the uplighting, how it may look when it's uplighted only, so the lights are on the ground. And it is a very spectacular view even with the simplest of lighting. These are the decorative hanging fixtures, which can be very light or they can be very elaborate. They can change, you know, the colors during the different holidays, for example. And then, these are some of the digital projections, which can be quite magical with different themes, with different, with different ideas. themes, with different, with different ideas. You can engage, you know, the local artistic community or invite some other people with, who have experience in this regard, digital projections and even animations, you know, birds, flowers, lakes, and all of these different things. We also had some ideas about naming, we know that the Benning Tree is a kind of the focal central point, and we didn't want to, to give a, a name of the whole park, but you, you have many options, and we just throw in a few here, Benning Tree Park, Benning Tree Square, Benning Tree Green, Benning Commons, Benning Place, Benning Garden, just ideas for you to explore along the way. And this is the last of my slide, thank you.
Thank you. That's great, that's very nice.
Thank you, Mayor Council. As a reminder, we did place a budget item in our CIP to begin the planning, and we would, it would require a landscape architect and engineers, and we'd have a, a much further process. We would also want to come back and have you sort of narrow down and provide us with direction on which of these elements with these options, combination of such, that you would like us to pursue. And I also understand that the Historical Society would like to come back and continue their ideas with you as well for the lighting of the tree. We also would like to continue talking to DPZ about some ideas for the Lyles Hotel and potential for some digital graffiti at that location as well. So this was just an introduction this evening. As I said, we have funds in the CIP to continue to explore it, but we do need some more feedback down the road from council on the direction you wish to go.
Progress, yes Fred?
I'd just like to make two points. Number one, you don't want to have very many permanent structures around, a tree grows and it has down roots and it has horizontal, and the more you restrict the roots, it's not going to do the, the tree a lot of good. Number one, number two, whatever we do in lighting, be sure it's LED, LED, LED. Other than that, no comments. I think, I think you did, did a good job.
Amy, please.
Thank you very much, it's a, it's a great presentation, there's a lot of things we could think about. I only have a couple of comments, I think that we need to coordinate some of the potential, and it's probably a problem of, or an issue that has to be addressed by the council, because we're having some planning for the Bamboo Village, the Bamboo property along the river, and some of these features might, like a community hall, I think was mentioned in there. So we want to, I don't know if we need duplicates, we have to just coordinate that.
Complement them, yeah.
Whatever they are. And the second one is, I don't think it's possible, after just looking this briefly, that you can do it in stages and incorporate some of them, like maybe start with the first one and then add some of the other ones, so they could evolve into it, like the third view, if you, if that was of interest to the city. I don't know if it's possible to do that, something like that.
Yes, I forgot to mention that, that it's probably possible, we tried to, to keep the direction of the pedestrian pathway, more or less the same, so we can look into phasing.
Right.
And if we want to evolve, we're going up to.
Because it might be a little easier to do it in that way until we sort of see where we're going. But you have wonderful ideas, I love the digital graffiti and put it all over town. It's good, thank you.
Yeah, I really liked what you put together, I think there's little pieces I like individually with each one of them, I think. For me, less buildings is better. I personally, I thought, you know, three, I don't really like the idea of having three buildings on there. The one building keeping it on there. And two, I, I liked that from a model standpoint. I would like to touch base with LCSO before we actually move, you know, in a direction of taking down the building, because I know, you know, there isn't somebody specifically in there all the time, but there are numerous purposes, they do store things in there, and from a deterrent perspective, it's kind of nice to have an LCSO building right downtown. So I would like to look in more to discussing that with LCSO and see what their thoughts are.
And to advise council, we did, we did contact LCSO, and so they're aware that this presentation was happening tonight, and that, and we gave them a briefing on the three options. We also reached out to the Rotary, so they're aware about the clock, and it's not, you know, consistent to change in that location, and we would actually be complementing it as well. And we also advised LCSO about the memorial, that it would be retained and on-site.
Did they have any thoughts about the usage of the building?
I think they want to continue that discussion because they liked, they understand that the city's going to be under an evaluation of that structure, and would like some more feedback in that, in that parameter.
Okay, so let's just keep that in our thought process as we move forward. And I think, yeah, you guys did really good, I liked some of the lighting options, pretty unique, they're doing some similar things, I was just over at the Van Gogh thing over in Miami last weekend, and some of the things that they can do with lights now, I mean, it's just, it's amazing some of the things you can do, so. I'm in, I'm definitely look forward to, as we get closer, kind of workshopping it with council so that there's pieces, like I love the secret garden, right, but the secret garden I don't think is into. So maybe, you know, maybe there's, each of us might have a little thing we like, so maybe there's, you know, some room to, to move it, but I think it's a very good starting point, so, thank you.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think also we should bring in the rooftop and see what they're doing so we're not overlapping, or they might be thrilled that you're putting the water park over there and they don't have to do it on, you know, but they want to do a water park to cool folks off. So, but it was a very interesting presentation, and I don't know if I would use graffiti a lot, because we've had some issues with graffiti.
I like that there's no fencing, because I saw some models earlier that had fencing around the tree, and I, maybe it wasn't you guys who did, but I was like, eh, that looked really bad. I like the openness of that was definitely.
We put fencing around the park, you know, we studied many parks, and, you know, we are showing a kind of the edges, it, it keeps it a kind of as a entity, you know, also maintenance and all of that, that's something for you to think about, we, we have the proposal for a fence around.
I meant, I meant around the tree.
The tree, no, no, we don't.
Let's.
Okay, Arlena, you're on, on deck for the next item?
Yes.
Stormwater assessment?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor Council.
Thank you, Arlena. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Your next item is to approve a resolution for the 22-23 annual stormwater assessment fee. Lisa Robertson is here, also if you have any questions, this is a requirement as we would need to notify the tax collector's office, should council wish to implement, and it's, it is in the proposed draft budget, and it's at the same rate as it has been for the past two years.
So moved. Second.
Any comment?
Just.
Yes, Jesse.
This one turned a little ugly last year, and I, you know, I voted on this twice, I don't feel the votes have probably changed, so rather than us all going through the wire tonight, I'm going to say that, you know, from District Two's perspective, I'm not in support for a number of reasons I've outlined before, that, you know, we don't need to reopen those wounds, but understanding that the same council for two consecutive years said the same thing, I don't imagine I have a majority tonight, so with that being said, you know, I'll note my objection, that'll be an L.O.I. Thanks.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilmember Cory?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Forbes?
Aye.
Councilmember Cumbah?
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon?
No.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Okay, let's see.
Thank you, Mayor Council, the next item is to adopt the proposed millage rate for fiscal year 22-23, as it is, it is left at the current rate, but we're here for your direction, and this is also.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, Jesse.
I would like to see if there's any appetite for, I'm sorry, you said the rollback rate?
No, they said the same rate.
I'd like to see if there's any appetite, and if there's not, there's not, to go to .7248 rollback rate, and I'm just basing that similarly on, wait, what taxable income in the city went up 15.5% last year. So I think if we go down to the rollback rate, you know, it's a, it is an appropriate action, I don't think that puts us in a financially bad situation. When we're growing at the rate that we're growing, I feel that this is one that we could probably go to the rollback and still be just fine, but.
Mike's closer than Fred.
This isn't the final, we could always lower it later, but we can't go any higher than what we set tonight.
Correct, correct, so, so today, what you're deciding on is what's going to go into the trim notice, then you have two additional hearings, budget hearings where you can decide to lower the rate, but you can, you can never raise it again after this.
Reggie, do you have something to comment?
Well, yeah, number one, I'm, I'm in agreement in principle to lower it some, probably like the proposal, .8, but I don't want to do anything until I know what we're going to do with those two ordinances that we had the first reading on, because if they go away, that's $1.8 million, and that is a lot of money. And on top of that, unless you redefine what a recession is, we're in a recession, and by next year, the property values are going to go down, but I still wouldn't have a problem making something like was proposed. But I think we need to, I think we, we need to discuss all these items together when we get to that second reading, because they all wash each other's hand, and I, and I'm not a tax and spend person, so, that's all my comment.
Myself, I, I'd like to go to .80. People have trouble with this inflation, the city has the ability to postpone any and all of their projects, where a family of four is trying to put food on the fam, food on the table, they don't have that choice in today's market. So I'm proposing a .8000.
I think we already have a motion.
We already have a motion, Mayor. We have a motion, okay.
I'm open to amending my motion, if you'd like, Mr. Mayor, I could, I could amend from the .72 to .8, and then at least we give them a tax cut of something.
No, 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 that's not the motion.
Oh, that was the motion, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were just, okay, gotcha.
The motion is to keep it at the same thing, and, and with, with the idea that this is just to provide the information that's needed for the trim notices. When we have our next kind of full budget meeting where we look at all the revenues, all the expenditures, all the things that we've incorporated, we could lower it. So this is just setting the cap here.
Okay.
All right, so we should, definitely should not set it at the trim, at the fallback, uh.
Rollback.
The rollback rate, we should put it higher than that, and when we have our next couple of meetings, we could talk about the, the amount. And that's the motion, is to keep it at where it is currently until we could talk about the next couple of meetings.
And that's at 5:05.
Who was the second on that?
I was.
Okay, I guess, any other comments on it? Let's all vote.
Councilmember Cory?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Forbes?
Aye.
Councilmember Cumbah?
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon?
No.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
No. Okay.
Mayor Council, I just have one other item I need to address, is we had received notice from Capital Strategies that as of August 31st, they were not going to be continuing to do lobbying services. So we'd like some direction, if you'd like us to go forward with a request for proposals or an LOI, we could bring that back to you in draft form with a discussion on, on the selection process.
Yes.
Very good.
Please do.
Direction?
I think I got direction, thank you.
Okay, very good. Okay, Mayor Council reports.
I just have a couple of comments, you know, when I was looking at the proposal that we passed for the apartments along I-75 and Benita Beach Road, it reminded me that we have a conceptual plan to do some kind of a branding item at that intersection, and this development takes one of the empty pieces of land that we might conceivably put something there. So the point I'm, I'm bringing up is if we really do want to have this kind of branding, I don't know what you call monument, or light, or lighting, or special trees, or special architectural things, we need to secure property in order to execute that when we finally decide, design the plan. Do people, I think we all remember seeing these concepts, I don't know, when, when did we, when was that done, was that done by DPZ or was that?
Yes, it was done by DPZ.
Right.
When we did the Benita Beach Road visioning studies.
So we've provided that information to Stan Tech to incorporate into the placemaking and entryway signs and gateway signs, that's supposed to be featured throughout the entire city. What we would be looking to do is to see, as for example, what was stated during the zoning hearing, is that there is some property that the FDOT controls, to do an interlocal or some sort of agreement with them, and then we can continue to look as development opportunities come forward, we can look to see where we could fit that in. But that is part of the master study that Stan Tech's doing right now, we, we need to get another update from that as well. But I did want to reiterate, that is signage throughout the entire city, and it's going to have different features for the beach area, for the downtown, which is more historic, for the interchange, which would be larger because of the vision and the cars. We'd also asked them to look at other communities across the state that utilize their overpasses for, for gateway features, and then more of a community feature throughout the whole city that our signage has a theme. Many communities don't have different colored street signs, they have maybe the city's logo or an emblem or a symbol to differentiate between a city street and a private road, so that it's more cohesive in nature.
My concern is, is that we're going to, if we get a lot of development on either side of that interchange, that we'll lose our opportunity to do what we thought we want to do, so I just think we should either, I know they're doing that plan, but if there's, if there is, if that is true, my concern is valid, I think we need to move on it. At least get some kind of an option on something so that if we wanted to put some, we'd have a place to put whatever we're trying to do. That's my first point. These are all kind of similar, because I'm sort of thinking about things that we, we talk about, we didn't do anything. Again, I, I recommend that some, the council considers what to be done about the Good Bread building that's been sitting there for a long time. And I don't know, I don't have a suggestion of my own, I'm not that creative, but I think we don't want to keep looking at it, the way it is. And then I also, what was brought up in some of the things that we're, we're here is that we now are going to have, at some point, a bonus density, out of the bonus density payment of 1.3 million, we're going to have a fund for affordable housing, and we don't have a plan for that, so in conjunction with receiving this, I think we need to work on some kind of strategy to, to do something about affordable housing that might utilize this potential fund, and if somebody else wants to do the same thing in the future with some other development, maybe there'll be, you know, additional funds that we can use. So we, I think we have to brainstorm about that, and I think that's all, I have a couple of unfinished business kinds of things that I would like the council to move on and not forget and just put in the backseat. So those are the three that I thought of for this meeting, because we, we had operated on some things that were relevant.
Fred, you have anything to add tonight?
Yeah, talking about what Amy's talking about, what we need to do, I think, is just, I agree with everything you've said, I think we need to be looking at where we get a piece of property. We get a developer in, but we maintain some kind of control, and we don't get into any more of these things of giving that money away to people that then, they sell the home at the market rate, take the profit and run, and then we're, we're back where we were, and then we have to put money back in to get another one built.
Jesse, you have anything to add tonight?
I'm good, thank you.
Laura?
Okay, thank you. Affordable housing, what about the Habitat program that we have going in Rosemary Park? We built one house, and aren't we building 13 others? So we could put the money there and kind of move that along, it's already designated. And do you remember way back when we had a presentation by FPL about solar shading? And it, and everybody was like, oh, but they get the electricity, well, in some ways, who really cares? If they do solar shading and generates light so it's safer, and then they make a little bit of money, but they maintain and they put in the, the items. Don't you remember that presentation way back when?
I do. The Cali County Complex, when we went on the tour, they showed us those and they said they weren't worth a dime, remember?
But they've gotten better. Well, anyway.
We did something with the, in the park there, we have, under the parking lot, we put some money into that, put electricity for.
Yeah.
Community park. Community park.
Mayor, what you're referring to is, we have a shade structure over some parking spaces at the community park off of Pine, that does generate some solar energy. I would have to get with Nicole, and it's, it's not a significant amount, but we, we do participate in the program that way. What I believe Councilman Carr is discussing is, there was some solar trees, or they go usually in park features, people could plug in a phone to charge. I think what we've heard is, earlier versions were a little problematic in, in, in getting the solar power there. There's also-
They were.
-so concerns about the images of how they looked. So, we would have to check to FPL number one, is the program still operating? And then maybe there's some other alternatives for the city to participate in solar energy. Maybe it's not the infrastructure in our part, maybe there's other programs they have going on, but we could bring back some more information on that. Thanks.
Chris, you got anything to add tonight?
Nothing, no.
Right?
I'm good, thanks.
Goodbye, folks, we're adjourned. Oh, no, come on up with your public comments. I always do that, keep you awake. Any public comments? Okay, here we got one.
We got one, yeah.
We got two, come on.
Hi, I'm O'Ann. I first moved here 30 years ago. I'm downtown every day, I'd like to speak to you about downtown. But I'd also like to just thank you, because it's clear, you know, in sitting through these meetings, and the meetings I don't attend, I watch online, we have really great stewards of this city, from the staff here, to the city council, to you, Mr. Mayor, we really appreciate that. And you can see examples of great consultants we had to the city, too, really world-class consultants, who have a proven record of, of chaining great results in revitalizing downtowns, as close by as downtown Fort Myers, but across the, the land. And, of course, there's never a straightforward path, there's always complications. And tonight, we heard an alphabet soup of accounting issues. For those of us that have been in, in business, and in, in high-powered positions, we know that you often run into accounting changes. In private enterprise, it's FASB accounting changes, and they change all the time. Here, it's government accounting standards boards, and I certainly appreciate that. And it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a proof of the strength of our city, that issues like this are surfaced and addressed. And, and the great thing is, they are addressed, and they're figured out. It is helpful to keep in mind, for that project in particular, a couple of main facts. One, that's five and a half acres, but the buildings that we're talking about cover a very small portion of the land. At the request of this council, and then in, after two decades of public feedback, that project was pulled back dramatically, providing a lot of very public space. So, we're going to have the first-ever public park access and public river access. So, we're, I sat in a meeting of this city council a year ago, where someone came in front of you and offered a million dollars for all five and a half acres. Now, we're talking about trying to find a fair value for a very small percentage of that five and a half acres, let's call it about an acre and a half, or something like that. So, so that's helpful. The other, the other big fact is, you know, when you're making decisions, you always have to consider alternatives. For the last 20 years, the taxpayer has received zero return on that property. Of course, we are concerned about making sure that we get fair value for that property, but the alternative is zero. And so, when you keep that in mind, it just shows that there really is a, a great way forward here. And that's great, because the stakes are high. For the rest of the world, Benita Springs has always been a throughway. We know, when you talk to FDOT, and when you talk to, you know, Naples, and when you talk to Fort Myers, they would just as soon turn our entire community into an overpass throughway. And you know what? They would leave Benita as the underpass, the dumping ground for all of southwest Florida. That's not our future. Our future is as a great destination. And that downtown, that authentic downtown, is unbelievably special. We live in a state that was developed, in a portion of a state that was developed after the Second World War, where the car ruled, and so we got highways and gated communities and strip malls. We didn't get great downtowns like the rest of Europe and America, and so forth. And when the history of southwest Florida is in the books, and we look at the real, authentic downtowns, the downtowns that drive vibrancy, that drive community, that have business, where people get together, where kids play in the park, where people enjoy concerts, where communities really thrive, there will be just three downtowns, three authentic downtowns, downtown Naples, downtown Fort Myers, and if we get the finishing touches right, and now, after 20 years, and as Councilman Purdon pointed out, tens and tens and tens of millions of dollars, we are on the precipice of getting it right. And getting that endorsement from a good firm, like Baron Collier, that encourages other bankers and investors and restaurant, restaurant, and entrepreneurs to come in, that's really important. So, thanks for your great stewardship for our city, and let's move forward and figure it out, as we always do. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Noel Kinsell. I've been a resident here for 43 years. My husband and I are local business owners of Synergy Pest Management. You have recently perturbed a lot of residents with your lack of communication concerning projects that changed historic Benita forever. Your most recent decision concerning Bamboo Village, which I am not for or against, and the lease with no public forum, no public question answer, and no public input, I find this to be distasteful, considering it's our right to be heard. Your next plan of action is to demolish the historic Wonder Gardens restaurant built in 1947, and then destroying the Everglades Wonder Gardens Zoo built in 1936. You're doing all of this under our nose, thinking you could pull the wool over our eyes and keep us in the dark on matters of importance. Mayor Steinmeier, how is that working out for you? How can a man serving two years in office destroy 100 years of history? As you may have realized, the past two weeks concerning the Wonder Gardens restaurant, resident voices, residents' voices deserve to be heard. Many people have listened through radio, news, and the paper. As of now, you have been deterred on your original plan of action to destroy the Wonder Gardens restaurant, and that is exactly what we were looking for.
Excuse me-
Mayor.
Mayor, could you instruct the speakers to not personalize their comments, please?
And not present false news.
Just do it, do it now.
This should not be personal.
Excuse me? Please?
Let's just, let it slide tonight.
Okay, all right.
Thanks, Amy. I appreciate you, Rob. Yes, sir.
Good evening, my name is Fredak. I have been a business owner in Benita Springs for 22 years. I have been in search of a location to place a restaurant, anywhere from North Naples to Estero for the last few months. So, I am here also to discuss the Wonder Gardens restaurant space. And I've been looking at spots, as I mentioned, in my search, this location would be perfect. I prefer to put a place on Old 41, historic district, as opposed to a strip plaza that's going to be like anywhere else in Benita, or Naples, or Estero. I understand from previous meeting, reasons for the thoughts on demolishing that building, I'll address each one briefly with potential solutions. The cost to bring the building up to date and repair, we, as the investors, would be covering these costs, and the city would have no expense in getting that building up to code. Your cost to demolish that building would be great, for the purpose of gaining, my understanding is eight to 10 parking spots, that really doesn't solve any parking solutions. On the parking concerns, we have ideas that will help resolve that, and help create more parking for the Wonder Gardens, or eliminate the parking concerns for the Water Gardens. And one way of doing this would potentially be to create trolley buses. Many of the people who come to the Wonder Gardens, many of the patrons that go there come from hotels. So, a couple of trolley buses could be created to pull those people in and out, and eliminate the need for parking spaces. You know, lot, lot more solution, I think, than creating nine parking spots. Our restaurants will bring people and revenues to the area, there was a successful restaurant there for 60 years, we will, we will do the same. I have heard people's desire to have potentially a welcome center in the area. We would be willing to set aside a section inside of the restaurant to create a state-of-the-art digital welcome center, that would focus on historic Benita Springs, and funnel patrons from the restaurant to the Water Gardens, driving, again, more revenues and patrons to the Water Gardens. In addition, a percentage of our proceeds will be donated to the Wonder Gardens efforts to rehabilitate animals. Our plans would be to be up and in business by December of this year. Thank you for your time and your service.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I'd like to make a comment. Come up to the microphone, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carla Sage, and I am from here. I was born in Naples 53 years ago. I've lived in Naples for 20 years. I sold my property back in March, and every day, I hate it. I live here, again, I bought a condo here, and I've realized that since I've come back home, there's been some change that the residents of Benita's, residents, and the voters, and the people that sit on the sidelines, aren't being educated about enough. It's like things are going on behind the scenes that we don't get enough knowledge of, and, and we need to receive more of it. Because the, the building projects, and I just spoke to the nice little man, what's your last name?
My name's Councilman Jesse Purdon.
Councilman Jesse Purdon. We are building this city up because of the accounting people, and, and wanting more revenue, to the point that we are outgrowing our britches. And what's going to happen is, when we have a hurricane, or another natural, natural disaster that hits, we're not going to be able to get out of this city. We're going to be worse off than, than Naples, because they have more space. None of this is being talked about. How are people going to get out of here? And putting a, a hotel that has four stories on Bamboo Mobile Village, why do you think that they put mobile homes there, there, there to begin with, and not, and not concrete homes? Because it's right there on the river. That ground can't withstand, like Alex brought up, the fact that NOAA has suggested that, that if, if building were to be done, that it needed to be raised 10 feet. That's a dangerous place to put any type of buildings, especially a four-building unit that has, that once you go from three stories to four stories, you have to have elevators, shafts going down right near that river's edge. What are, what's going to happen to the structure of, of that land near, near that river? Have you guys ever, have you guys thought about that? Because we, we all do. Because we, we've seen disasters happen, we've seen it flood. People couldn't live in their homes that, that lived by that before. I'm in favor of, of the wonderful things that you guys proposed with the YMCA, but we need to start thinking about, we're starting to get overgrown. Our banyan tree needs, needs, needs sidewalks around it. Not everybody's done enough research, those things cover five acres at, at sometimes. It needs room to grow. You can't put sidewalks and, and fountains near a banyan tree that, that requires room to grow. It's not, it's not even half-finished. It may be 100 years old, the, one of the greatest ones is already marked at 250 years old in India. So, I, I don't think that, I don't think that, that everybody's being given enough information. Mr. Comey brought up, it's not safe. I need two more minutes. Can I have it? Can, can I have the extra two minutes?
No.
No?
Everybody would have to have it, then.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else? I'd like to make a comment. If you want to insult me, I have a phone, no, now you're going to come up. Anybody else wants to speak, please get in line. Yes, ma'am.
It's not a matter of insulting you.
Well, maybe not you.
We-
I'm sorry, your name, ma'am?
My name is Elnita Hitchcock. I was a law firm for 30 years. My father was Pappy Hitchcock. He did most of the welding around here. I have 14 siblings. There's five generations of us here. There's a lot, as you all know, it's beautiful what is happening downtown, and we do appreciate that, and we do want that. But we don't want the blood, sweat, and tears, and the who the people that built this town were. And they were mostly fishermen, and hard-working families, farmers. And that knowledge of who Benita is, is nowhere to be found. And that little building that's trying to be taken down, maybe it doesn't need to be a restaurant, I don't know, but there's a lot of knowledge that people that come to visit about our animals, about our trees, about our water, about our sky, that we could at least give. You know, I got to spend today with my great-grandbaby. My mama didn't get to do that. There's a lot of people that don't get to do that. I'm 63 years old, and I love those little people that helped me as a teenager. And I think we need to give more of that back, instead of that phone that's in their hand, that when we're sitting around that table. And they can't get that if they don't have the place for people to have that common ground. It means a lot to me, and I hope that it gets reconsidered, some way that we could all work together and save the things that are very old and important to Benita, for who they are. Who we were and became to here, for us, is just as important as who we're becoming. And I thank you for my time, your time.
Hang on, Fred. Anybody else? Public comment, one time, coming, gone, no more public comment. Fred, please.
Yeah, I, I would like to make a couple of statements. Number one, somewhere in the last week to 10 days, someone has created, I would like to think it was with good intentions, a rumor that the city was planning to not only demolish the restaurant, but the Wonder Gardens. None of us have that in our mind, never did. So, that means that that rumor is really a malicious rumor. And they never came and asked one of us up here about it-
Absolutely.
-or the staff. But yet, they're believing it. They got you guys believing it. It's wrong. That is not into cards. Now, man that made the proposal on the restaurant, it's interesting, I'm, I would like to talk to him to see if he understands everything that has to be done to that restaurant. If he does, I'd be interested in releasing it to him with the deal that he proposed. I don't think he realizes what he's getting into, but if he does, more power to him. But that is wrong, what was being said, and you people have been taken in by it. And that's wrong again. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Fred. Anybody else? Yes, Jesse?
I'm, I think that, you know, there's still more discussion to be had. I think that, you know, the approach of some of you probably wasn't as good as the approach of others, but there's a lot of emotion involved in it. The reality is, there has been a lot of- The reality is, there has been a lot of, just like with the downtown, there's been a lot of false narratives that have been spread throughout the community, and then you get on Backpay, Backyard, and Facebook, and all these groups, and you have these people who are saying things that are completely the opposite of what's going on. I don't know if you heard the rumor that me and the mayor were going to sell the Wonder Gardens to the city of Estero or not, but that, that was one of the latest ones. So you can see how absurd it gets, and then you get folks who rightfully so. Look, and if I heard that, and I didn't know me, and I didn't know Rick, I would be upset, too. You know? But we have so many of these things that are going around, and going around. We're not trying to take the Wonder Gardens down, we've never been trying to take the Wonder Gardens down. And the deal is, the reality of this building, if this, if, if you want to talk to us, Jeff, sir, you want to talk to us, we can talk. You're talking about a quarter million dollars to get that building up and moving, to start, okay? You're talking water damage, you're talking termites, you're talking ADA compliance, and a lot of other issues going on there. If you have the money and all of that, you know, maybe we, we have something to discuss. But the reality is, listen, this entire property is, this is city land, and you all are trying to make it seem as if we're trying to take down something that isn't, doesn't belong to the city, and we don't have the authority to do. It's not about authority, and it's not about whether we should or shouldn't. We have to look at the finances, and we have to look at, look at the budget. We have a, how big is our budget? How many projects are in that budget? So many. So it's our job to be good fiscal stewards. When we look at the situation where we spent $60 million for downtown, and now we're finally here, we've had the, we had one entity that was against it, we had another that was for it, until they were against it the day of, and at the end of the day, you're talking about a building that for the last three years has stood there empty. The only emails that I've gotten about it were to take it down, because it doesn't look good. I am a vested person, as far as our history goes, if you go downtown, you look at the water tower that's still up there, I saved that water tower 24 hours before it came down. It was voted to be demolished, and it's still up. So what you're doing, I appreciate and I understand, but I feel like some of y'all are fighting with half-truths, because you're being told things that are not accurate. So with all that being said, I look forward to hearing from the gentlemen in the public out there. And to the last woman who spoke, you were very pleasant, and I appreciate the way in which you spoke to us on this, because you seem like, you seem like a pretty good person who's trying to make this work the right way. Can't say the rest is the same for everybody, but you did pretty good in that regard. Thank you.
Well, if anybody in this audience has a problem with me, my phone number is 992-3018. Please call me if you want to know the truth. Our city manager was told that Jesse and I went to Estero to try to sell the Wonder Gardens, and what it ain't, what did Arlene say? She's, the mayor doesn't leave town. I don't leave town. This is my home. This will always be my home. It's been here for 45 years. My grandmother died here. They bought property in 1948, next to the Wonder Gardens, and Lester and Bill Piper and I were good friends. I've been out to their ranch, their branding, their brand is Too Lazy To Pee. Don't, don't believe what you're hearing, and don't read the newspaper, because they said that we were going to decide that tonight, but that's not true. So anyways, I'm glad to see you all woke up and get involved with this city, because it's your city, and we work for you, but don't believe all the lies that come at you, okay? So my number is 992-3018. It's my home phone number, and I answer my own phone, and I answer my, all the questions. I'll call you back if I'm not there. So I hope you're happy. Thank you. We're adjourned.